In the absence of a quorum of the members of the city council, the city clerk is calling to order the meeting of the five o'clock closed session meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville and the city council sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. It has been determined that the one item that is on the five o'clock closed session agenda is no longer necessary to be discussed, there is no information to present, and therefore the five o'clock closed session meeting is canceled. The regular meeting at six o'clock will resume as scheduled.
Called the meeting to order at six o'clock seems to get to us sooner than we like sometimes. Did not have a closed session. Going to start the council meeting a little bit different because we're going to have the clerk to have a roll call first. Is your mic on, Jim? Is the mic on, folks?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Eckeren?
Mayor.
Mayor Cox.
And next I'm going to ask Minister Deborah Sumner to come up for the invocation, and please remain standing after the invocation, and Sam LaCue, our police chief, will then lead us in the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you today for bringing us all safely together, and we ask that you would just invoke your presence here today, Father God, and we just ask right now for your wisdom and your direction during this proceeding, and we pray for every leader, everyone that you have placed in authority over the city, the county, the state, and the nation, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands.
We give these presentations, I'm the lucky one on behalf of the council, and I enjoy giving these sometimes, and sometimes I regret it, and this one is with mixed blessings. Donna Lemoine, would you come forward, please?[221.12][221.12](Laughter/Applause). We've been hiding this from you. Donna's, for those who don't know, has is retiring, and the city family is presenting this to Donna, and I'm going to read it. May the blessings of good health, the joy of good friends, and loving family, and the contentment of a job well done. Fill your life with happiness. A gift from your family at the city of Victorville. We will miss you.
Donna, would you like a picture with your family?[264.19][264.19](Laughter).
Get out of here free and clear, didn't you?
Donna was tremendously helpful during my time as the mayor. She made sure that I got in and signed documents on a regular basis, and made sure I got those 460s in, so Donna, we're going to miss you a lot.
And again, Donna, from all of us up here in the city family, thank you for all the hard work you've done. Madam Clerk, would you present the agenda to the council, please?
There are three revisions to tonight's agenda. The first one is regarding appeal hearing item A1. There is a letter received from Mr. Anthony Kim of Briggs Law Corporation in regards to that appeal hearing. The second item is...
Wait, stop, wait, I'm sorry. There is a letter that we've received regarding A1?
Yes.
Do I have that?
That should be on the dais, yes. It has, copies have been made available to the public as well. Do you have that?
I have so many revisions, I'm trying to...
The second revision is to public hearing item B2. There are three letters in support of the variance in billboard relocation agreement from High Desert Hospitality LLC, BJ's Restaurant and Brew House, and KB Homes. And the third revision is to public hearing item B2. Resolution numbers 13058 and 13059 have had some revisions to the verbiage that has been requested by the city attorney, and those are all the revisions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Again, for the record, is it resolution 13058 that's been revised?
Yes, and 13059. There are two resolutions on that item.
What are the revisions? Record?
Yes.
What are they?
Oh, I'm sorry. They're revisions requested by the city attorney.
Mr. Attorney, what are the revisions?
They pertain to the findings and determinations to support, assuming the council wants to decide to approve this, they pertain to the findings and determinations that need to be made.
Any other items?
There are no other revisions.
The first item before the city council tonight at the regularly scheduled meeting is appeal hearing item A1. The letter is about on A1. My understanding of this is that the matter has been withdrawn, and if it's withdrawn, it's withdrawn. Need to be rescinded, I mean, Planning Commission, does this have to go back to the Planning Commission for them to take any kind of an action, Mr. Attorney?
No, it does not. The item was withdrawn, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution that addressed both the withdrawal of the application as well as the mitigated negative debt that went along with it, so the project, for all intents purposes, is dead, there's no need to take any further action, the item can be tabled.
No further action is necessary, then.
Correct.
Next item before the city council, then, is item A1. This is a request of staff to refer back to the Planning Commission, case number PLN 13-00010, a billboard relocation agreement and site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for a new digital display billboard on property located at 12224 Mariposa Road, Sternstein Restaurant. In this case, the action of the city council is to simply refer this back to the Planning Commission, is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
This one is being requested to be referred back to Planning Commission. Yes.
Do we have a continued public hearing on this matter, Madam Clerk?
This is a scheduled public hearing, so it would be appropriate to take any testimony and then refer back.
At this point in time, then, if we have a, I thought it was a continued public hearing, I thought it had been continued from the last meeting, no?
It was, yes.
Yes, it was, yes.
Okay. So it's just a continued public hearing, this public hearing is open, if anyone in the audience would like to speak to the council on this item. I have cards, but I do not have one on A1. Therefore, I am going to close the public hearing, since no one is speaking, there's no questions of staff.
B1, yeah.
The action requested, then, is to refer this back to the Planning Commission, chairs up for motion.
Mayor Cox, the item, just for clarification, is B1, I think you called it A1.
Oh, B1, I'm sorry, B1. Well, wait a minute. I do have... B1, B2, no, I still don't have a card for that, so I was correct. Public hearing is closed. Chairs up for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern, to refer the matter back to the Planning Commission.
I'm going to vote aye, my computer is not working. Oh, there we go.
Mine's not working either.
Patient.
Mayor Protem, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is B2. This is, this will be a public hearing. Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding variance in a billboard relocation agreement, adopted two resolutions that come before the city council, and I will open the public hearing, and we have an individual who's, two individuals who have requested to speak on the item before I open the public hearing. Are there any questions from the council to the staff, or any presentation from staff to the council?
Mr. Mayor, we've got a brief staff report, and then I would like to make a couple of comments. Chris Portchert, our acting director of development.
Chris?
Thank you. Yes, this item represents PLN 13-20, and it's a request for a billboard relocation agreement and a variance. The applicant believes that the moving and reduction of the billboards in compliance with city codes is cost prohibitive, prohibitive to developing the site, therefore, the request before you is to allow the two existing billboards to be moved on the site out of the right-of-way. The code requires the billboards to be a minimum of 1,000 feet apart when relocated, and it requires that two other billboards be removed as part of the city's overall goal of reducing the total number of billboards. A variance from those requirements has been requested. The Planning Commission heard these items on December 11th and have forwarded a recommendation of approval to the council. Based on their recommendation, staff has provided updated versions of resolution 13058 and 059 for approval. The revisions, as Andre noted, were to bring in the justification for the variance from the applicant that he provided, so those have been added to the resolution. The applicant, Tom Robinson, and representatives from BJ's Restaurant are here, and staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chris. There's a couple of facts I'd like to bring out. A lot of the focus of this item has been on the BJ's Restaurant and the support of bringing the BJ's Restaurant to Victorville. My rewards card would be evidence that I'd like to see it here too, just for the record, or maybe off the record. But anyway, one of the things that I think has been lost in all of that discussion is that the parcel in question with the two signs on it, actually, the signs, the sign posts are in line with the future Amargosa Road. So BJ's aside, and the desire to have BJ's here aside, the reality is, the decision by the Planning Commission, or the recommendation by the Planning Commission essentially allows the developer to move those two signs in a manner that actually the city would be required to do if we were to condemn that property in order to widen Amargosa Road. Everyone knows we have a hospital under development almost immediately south of there, at some point, we will need to widen that road. So should the council decide to uphold the Planning Commission recommendation, or to approve their recommendation, essentially, you're saving the city dollars in the future that we would have to pay in order to move those signs. Should you not, at some point, the developer, should he decide to develop, would have to eliminate one or both of those signs because of the current ordinance of a three-to-one ratio when moving a sign. So just wanted to bring that out. I think it's an important fact that has kind of been lost a little bit in the excitement about possibly getting a BJ's Restaurant.
Just to make sure I'm clear on that, because I was, I was wondering about what we would do in the future if this project never developed and we didn't uphold it, and at some time in the future, we decided to complete Sycamore Road, and we would have to condemn those signs and order them to be moved?
One of the signs would be in the extension of Sycamore Road, but both of those signs actually would be in the extension or the widening of Amargosa Road. Short, or almost immediately north of this site, Amargosa Road in front of Walmart and Poncho Villa's is a four-lane with a center turn lane and making it a five-lane road, and then immediately south of there, it turns into effectively a two-lane road, it's got a slightly wider shoulder in some spots, but essentially, it's a two-lane road. Someday, the plans in Victorville call for that to be a five-lane road all the way through to the city of Asperia. At some point, if this doesn't develop in this manner, if the city wanted to widen that road, we would then need to condemn those signs, or condemn that property potentially, and in doing so, our current code for billboard moving allows the city to simply move those signs on a one-for-one basis.
At our own cost?
It doesn't allow the developer to, it would be at our cost if we were condemning. I don't want to put a price on billboards, but suffice it to say, it's at least six figures and potentially seven figures if you ultimately eliminate them, and they get to, you know, talk about the economic impact of however long their contract was to have the billboard there.
So is it safe to say that we would then, in the future, have to do by condemnation what they are asking us to approve that they do today without the condemnation?
I think that's very accurate, with one assumption, that would be that we would at some point want to widen that road prior to when they would want to develop the property. If they come in to develop the property, they would need to move them, but given the cost of moving two billboards, possibly removing two billboards, it could possibly be uneconomic. We haven't looked at those numbers, but in essence, by the variance that's being recommended, we're allowing the developer to apply the rules that we would apply to ourselves per our code. Now, you may ask, is this setting a precedence? In this case, and I don't want to take Andre's job, but in this case, there is a significant difference in that the poles for these billboards are in that right-of-way that we will need versus simply any other sign that's not in the way, it's considered essentially a nuisance by the code.
I, you've raised several questions in mind, I know that you have a question, and I'll get right to you, Mr. Mayor Protem. You indicated that you would allow them to remove, you didn't say it would require them to remove, and also, there's a difference between removing and moving, and also, there's a difference in the condemnation of the signs and the condemnation of the property, and there's also a difference in requiring the signs to move out of the right-of-way but remain on the property under the same terms and conditions. Why aren't those issues? Man, there's more than one option here that's available.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Several options, but we haven't addressed them.
There are any number of options that the council could take.
If you condemn, first of all, the confusion is, is that, I'm going to quote, that agreed to move them to allow for the project, but the project's on a different lot, so they don't have to be removed for that project. So they're being moved as a condition of a project, but the project can be approved with no conditions whatsoever.
The project for the restaurant is approved at this time, my understanding is, they could proceed with that project right now.
So, and they'd still be within 1,000 feet of each other, but they would just move But the city wouldn't have the option to widen the road to also move them, leaving them on the same parcel, under the same lease conditions?
We actually would have that option.
We would have the option, we'd have to compensate them through a, it'd probably be just a relocation, because the code provides that they could be relocated at that time. That would be a cost to the city.
I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't compensate them, but I'm not suggesting that the billboards be condemned.
Certainly, that's an option, just to essentially allow for the relocation of those billboards.
The code allows for the city to relocate those on a one-for-one basis, it doesn't allow for the developer to do that.
It also allows the city to enter into agreement to move the signs within 1,000 feet to be relocated on another property within the city, so that they wouldn't lose the sign.
That is an option.
And therefore, there is no compensation except for the interim period, because the sign itself is not condemned. Also, we talked about the necessity of the street widening project in Sycamore, but as I recall from looking at the maps with the engineer, Sycamore doesn't go anyplace, and it's reduced to a two-lane street or driveway opening only. Doesn't go through, doesn't go anyplace.
We did check the circulation element, and it is a collector street from Amargosa Road to the wash road behind the development.
To the wash.
To the wash, next to Walmart.
That lines up with the hotel or Walmart, yeah. It doesn't go anyplace.
Right, but it is required between that section, it's on the circulation element.
It's a driveway. The city could actually vacate that from the street improvement plans, it wouldn't make any difference. They would put it in if they wanted as a driveway, or they wouldn't, because it doesn't serve the general public, it serves that particular development.
No, it would actually serve as access to, from Amargosa Road back to Walmart, or the mini storage property, or the hotel properties, so it...
Is there a dedicated public street that comes?
No, it hasn't, it doesn't have complete dedication yet.
Okay, that's what I thought. Well, it's just, I realize there's a lot of arguments, and when you're trying to win an argument, you throw everything up, and you hope something sticks, but that one didn't.
Well, I just need to be clear, I've received advice from our city attorney that I could hear this item, I'd just like to...
Yes, for the record...
...go on the record that I can, and that it has no, there's no conflict of interest.
That is correct, you had a concern based on that you have the same legal counsel that represents, actually, not even the applicant here, but the billboard company that may be deemed, but you have no economic interest at all that's affected in any way, just the mere representation by your attorney of two separate parties does not create a conflict of interest for you, so you are fined to vote on this.
All right, and just to be clear, on the previous item, I voted on that one only because it was requested by staff to refer it back to the Planning Commission, that does nothing to help Lamar or my city, or my personal attorney.
Correct.
Any more questions? I know there's going to be, I have more questions, but I don't want to take it up right now, we'll take it up afterward, the conclusion of the public hearing. Any more questions of staff?
I do, I know that we have Commissioner Rob Kurth that voted no on this, can you explain why he voted no? He's seasoned, so he knows his way around these codes, and what was his, what was his issue on the planning commission?
He didn't verbally state it, I can only assume that he was following the staff recommendation in the staff report.
I see. So, we have an ordinance that says that if they want to move it, that they take three down for one digital, correct?
Correct.
Three?
If they're doing a digi, well, no, actually, either way. One of the ones that they're taking down will be the one that they're moving to, so it's, you still end up with two total reductions, one gets relocated.
So, but the city may have to move them later for, to develop Amargosa Road because of the hospital, correct?
Correct.
So, it could cost us roughly how much to do that?
That, I'm not probably the right one to do, to ask that about street improvements and the, but the billboard relocations could be potentially...
We would be probably on the hook for the cost of the relocation, under the code, you do have the option of allowing for it to be relocated to another site, but then you bring in factors of what the cost of that site is, et cetera, et cetera, so it's completely unknown at this point. We would not have to compensate them for the loss of the billboard, because they'd be able to relocate to a different location. The question is, what does that cost? We don't know.
One of the issues also is that the easement that they have on this property is in perpetuity, meaning that there's no month-to-month, it's forever. To have them move a billboard from here to another site, it's a stretch to think that they're going to get that same easement or that same benefit, so that could cost addition.
Like, what are we talking here? Are we talking millions, or are we talking tens of thousands?
Well, it could be hundreds of thousands potentially, I mean, depending on the length of time they can find for the location they're going to. The billboards generate a lot of money on an annual basis, and so they are a pretty lucrative proposition for the billboard companies.
But if you multiply a lot of money by perpetuity, it's, yeah, exactly.
It can become a very big number, and again, the unknown here is what property they could relocate to, what the length of time is that that relocation would allow for, could they get an easement in perpetuity on some of the property, that's unknown, and what would that cost?
Now, I guess what I'm struggling with is that BJ's is approved to come in, and they're ready to go, but then now the developer is coming back and saying, oh, well, you know, if we could do this, BJ's will come in, but I thought they were coming in, so...
They would have liked this to all go together as one package, it didn't work out where we could get this agreement and the details of it to the Planning Commission at the same time as BJ's wants to be on the time schedule. The issues, and they can discuss them, we, I just met with them half an hour ago, but the issues with BJ's are the access, not having Sycamore. If, if the developer isn't allowed to develop the property to the south, it makes it more difficult for BJ's to accept the site. In effect, BJ's hasn't voted to accept this site yet until this, until this vote goes before the council, is what they're...
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, BJ's found what, development of the property?
There's issues with the site that involve access, the way that the parking lot works, functions, and the not having access to Sycamore at this time, which could be resolved if the property of the south is able to develop, and also, the other aspect that BJ's is noting is that they don't want to be the last one in line, they would prefer that there be further commercial development as you go farther south along Amargosa, and that's another deciding factor in trying to choose whether they want this site or not. Apparently, that's not a final decision yet.
But we can, we can deviate from this ordinance...
Yep.
...without setting a precedence because of what it would cost us in the future.
That is one of the rationales for doing it, you also have findings and determinations in the enhanced resolution that's part of the revision as to giving you justification, but you, as a city council, with your police powers, could grant this variance if you decide to do so.
But another restaurant can't come in and say, you know, we want to move it, but we don't want to have to adhere to your ordinance, they can't do that.
Not based on just precedent like this, you're granting a variance based on specific facts and circumstances affecting this piece of property. Now, if you've got exactly the same set of circumstances, they have an argument that they should be treated the same way, but this is a unique situation, and you are making findings and determinations, assuming you proceed with this project, that indicate that that's the reason for your decision.
Couple of questions.
Carrie?
Is there, is there a way to align Sycamore to Mariposa that these things would not create a problem, or would that create a...
There is, but Amargosa is the issue.
I'm sorry?
There is, Sycamore could be realigned to not touch that billboard, but Amargosa, it's sitting in the sidewalk of Amargosa.
The real problem is the long-term development, if you will, of Amargosa.
Correct.
Jim, I'm not sure I understood your point, I thought Doug said that that process would be a condemnation process, where we would require those signs to be moved, and would have to move them ourselves. Were you saying that it's not condemnation? Were you saying that it's not condemnation?
No, 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 no. If there was no project in front of the city, and you had a billboard that was sitting on a piece of property with identical circumstances in perpetuity, and you would need to move it because of the right-of-way, the city council can go into court and have the sign moved and cover all the costs, and argue whether or not they lost business during the movement, but you don't condemn the billboard and buy the billboard and pay for the loss. There's a lot difference.
But would we pay the cost of relocating it?
We would.
Yeah.
The public agency would. Same as we have in the past. That's the precedent that has been set.
Yeah, the condemnation that I talked about was for the road right-of-way. You condemn that land, the billboard is on the land, then you would be required to move the billboard as a function of that condemnation.
Oh, that's...
And our ordinance allows for that. We don't have to go to court for that. Our ordinance allows for that, the one that was passed earlier this year.
So do we get an offer of dedication for the right-of-way that we need also, as a part of this?
I don't know the details enough, Chris.
We'll find out during the hearing, because if not, there's something that's lacking.
Perhaps it's something that Mr. Robinson...
Yes, in our discussions, he is willing to do that. Of course, we couldn't accept that until the billboards were relocated out of the right-of-way.
Okay, but I didn't see that in any of the agreements, so that would be, if council gets to that point, that would be a consideration to discuss. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing on this particular item, and I have two cards. I don't know in which order they came, but it's Christopher Dustin and Dino DeFazio. Mr. Dustin, you're going to go first? Okay.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say, congratulations on running the city very well. I can see it quite evident by the fact that you guys opened with a prayer, that means a lot to me personally, and also the whole idea that I see when I look and I see the beautiful Dick's Sporting Goods, Macy's, Walmart, and the progress and the, you know, and the growth that our city is really having here. And I would like to share with you a little bit of a true story that occurred about a year and a half ago. As you guys know, I was the former ASB president at Victor Valley College, and what had happened was, is one of my, at that time, senators on my council was going to have a birthday party, and she was going to have this birthday party, and she decided she wanted to have it at BJ's. Well, guess what? Because there's no BJ's up here in the high desert, she had to have it in Ranch Akukumanga. So when you think about it, all the tax revenue and all that generation of income that basically would have been coming to the city, didn't get to come to the city because it went to Ranch Akukumanga. I know she doesn't really care about that, you know, in realistic terms, but when you think about it, as somebody like myself looks at that, and I realize that, you know what? This is something that our community needs. You know, our community could actually use a place like this. And I would urge the council to vote yes on this variance, and keep going for the city of Victorville, and I appreciate all that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Chris. Next card is Dino DeFazio.
Mayor, council members. First, I'd like, the developer would like to speak. He didn't know he had to turn in a card to speak.
It's okay, because this is a hearing and the developer here, he's always welcome to speak.
Okay. Just want to bring up a few things about the relocation of the billboards. If you look at the letters in your packet, there are two other projects that would like to see this happen. One is the KB Homes. They would like to see Sycamore paved, so that they could develop their tract. They can develop without it, but in their letter, it states that it would be easier for them to develop with Sycamore Road.
Doesn't go to their tract.
Pardon me?
That's what I was clarifying. Sycamore does not cross the Wash and go to their tract.
Well, they put it in their letter, I just read their letter.
I know, but I also know, because I handled that project.
Okay. The hotel also would have better access, and they would be able to develop their property with the hotel there. The other thing, what they're asking, and because these, a lot of billboards where they pay rent, they have like a term, they end in 25 years, they end in 40 years, these are easements, so they have these easements forever. So Lamar has no reason to want to move the billboards, because they could stay there forever until you make the process of either condemning, or the city moves them. And all the developer is asking, "Let's move them today, we can get BJ's in today, and we'll develop the other property too, so you'll have the whole thing developed." Now, there's a rep, and the developer's going to speak about BJ's, but we met with Chris, and right now, they've approved the site with the additional site being done. If we don't get the billboard relocation today, it has to go back to their committee for another vote, to see if they want to do it, because of the access issues, they would really like to have access off of Sycamore to help with their restaurant site. Also, the BJ's will, between BJ's and the balance of the development, you're looking at between 300 to 400 jobs, because as soon as the BJ's is approved, the property across the way has people that are interested, but they'd like to see BJ's there to be able to go. So it will stimulate other development on that project, plus you possibly have another hotel, and in his letter, he stated the income that the city would get. So it's a win-win, because if the city does not approve the variance, then with the hospital going in, they possibly will have to do what the developer's asking, which is move the billboards, because the cost will be in the seven digits on a perpetual lease if you had to move them somewhere else. So the city would end up just relocating the billboards, and that's all they're asking to do now. City gets a BJ's, they get development now, they get the developer paying for all the cost of developing, and in the end, the city would probably end up relocating them on that site anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. DeFazio, the council? And I, the individual, I did not, please give your name for the record.
Tom Robinson, I'm with Vantage One, the applicant. Mayor, and city council members, thank you for considering this. There were a lot of questions, Dino answered some of them, and I'm open for any questions you have, but a couple of the ones that popped up really quick, and I think is, on BJ's, they did approve the site, and we did go to them with the overall integrated development and the hotel site behind us. And one of the issues they had with locating here, which they liked this location, it's their number-one choice and only choice in Victorville, there was another site in this area that threw an outrageous financial incentive, that threw them off track. Staff and myself worked extremely hard in getting it in front of the planning commission, and BJ's did too, getting their elevations done. We got the site approved, so they're focused on this site. So I don't want that to be a threat here, I'm not here threatening, I want this to be a positive thing for everyone. One of the issues, there's two main issues with BJ's on this site, and it has to do with access, being a successful restaurant, it's a statement tenant. When you have a tenant like this, in their category in restaurants, they're one of the better restaurants in the whole country. And it used to be Starbucks a long time ago, when Starbucks would come somewhere before they opened up everywhere. When Starbucks would plant down, everyone would go, "Oh, that town's good," or "That area is good." Some tenants wouldn't even do demographics, they would just go right next to them. It's the same thing with Whole Foods right now, and that goes up and down on who those tenants are. Whole Foods is one, Trader Joe's is one, C's Candies sometimes is, and BJ's is one of those tenants. And what they want in access is because they're going to be a high-volume restaurant, they're projecting over $5 million out of this restaurant, a lot of that is taxable, and they're going to employ about 200 people. And even more importantly than that, I think for Victorville, it's a statement. You guys are already here, but it's one more tenant like Dick's, and you come in and you anchor yourself a little bit more, and it helps me on the second phase, lease to high-quality tenants. And when I went to BJ's, they've seen some of my past developments, and I've worked with their real estate in the past in other cities, in Chino Hills, and they know the quality of development I do, and what I surround it with. I'm a long-term holder, I'm not a merchant builder, I don't build and sell. I hold my projects long-term. And on this project, I'll show you really quickly on the access of what they are talking about. The site is currently approved, and this is Amargosa right here, and this is the future Sycamore. The way they're approved is, we have two points of access that accommodates the fire regulations and...
Tom, or Ennis, please, which is Amargosa, where is...
This is Amargosa, right here. This is Danae, right here, and this would be the future Sycamore. This is the Phase Two project that we're talking about. So what happens right now is you come into BJ's, and you can either go a quick left, and you get stuck in this right here. So everybody's pulling out, and as you know, when you're going to a restaurant, people pulling in for reservations, people pulling out, it gets really congested. So you can come back out, you can come this way, or right now, you can travel back down two aisles, back out this way. So it's not the ideal situation. And we have a number of different layouts that the restaurant, the hotel is proposing, depending on the brand it, he gets, but we can't put an entry or exit right here, because it's the chicken and the egg. It's too close to the Sycamore Road right here, the eventual Sycamore, when it gets put in, or if it doesn't, the future, you have to plan for it. So that's too close to there, so we couldn't have that, and initially, we proposed that. And Brian, the city engineer, was very astute, and said, "Hey, we can't do that, even though it's way out in the future, it's not going to work." So ultimately, what will happen is, when we coordinate with the hotel site here, we'll bring the exit out, we'll have an exit here, and there's an exit here. So there's two points of access out and in, and also into this project over here. So it helps alleviate that. The second part is just simple retail 101, it's just, it's synergy. They don't want to be the last in the row, next to the mini-storage and a vacant lot, so that's the main, there's no special formula, say one other tenants around them, and I know with BJ's, I can put some quality tenants and finish that development up. On BJ's going forward, they will take this back, and with my experience with BJ's, this is not going to be approved. If it's not approved, I'm still here, I own the land, I'll do a good project, it's not going to be saying high-quality tenant is BJ's, this is top in class, but I'm here, I'm going to stay here, I won't stamp my feet if you deny it, I'm here long-term. But on the BJ's and the sign relocation, if you agree to it, I'll agree. If it isn't BJ's, the deal's blown up, because I predicated this whole thing, and the synergy and the access that BJ's needs on a high-quality tenant, so that's number one. Mayor, you brought up another issue that I really didn't think about, but the dedication, yeah, 100%, I'll do that, and I'll do that. And then the sign relocation agreement, I didn't really think of this one, but staff brought this one up too, is, well, what if you get this variance approved, and then you just go sell the property, and right away, and then we're stuck with someone else? I'll make this personal, I'm willing to make this personal to me and my company, that I'll follow through on this. So I'm not going to go, "Oh, I've got the variance, I'm going to go sell the land to someone." I'm here to develop the land, and be long-term. On the sign relocations, if you approve this, I went to Lamar and asked him, "Is there any way you consider moving these in one of your relocation deals?" They didn't even want to talk to me. They said, "We have too many issues with the city," and it took me a while to get them to agree, and it's the same thing. I went to them, "This is going to create jobs, it's going to be great for the community, it's going to be great for business for all of Victorville, because it creates more business, potentially you'll have customers there." And more importantly for me, it's jobs. I mean, we all need jobs right now, and in my business, you know, I've been doing this for 28 years. Originally, when I was younger, it was just about the money, but we all need to look at jobs now. Everybody in this community needs jobs, and it's every community, and even these little blips, this isn't going to move the arrow on your city, but it's important, it'll solve 200 problems of people who don't have jobs and need jobs, so that's very important to me also. I will be putting in Sycamore Road, we'll probably have agreements with the adjacent owners, share the cost on it, but we'll be footing the cost, the developers and the landowners as opposed to the city. And that's the same thing with Amargosa. We'll be putting in those improvements, and the city will not have to do that. I know there's been issues with the sign company, I've learned them all too well over the last several months, and I, if the signs came off the property, I would be very happy. I don't think that's an option right now, but by relocating back right in that direct same area, I think if we went out there tonight and did it, tomorrow morning, you drive by there, and you wouldn't even notice they were missing. I know there's a bigger issue than that here, and I really respect that. But ultimately, I think Amargosa is going to need to be widened, and you're going to have to either deal with me getting this done right now, at no cost to the city, I think, you know, you've had your dealings with Lamar before. I'll be cooperative, no matter what, when it is, so you can always count on me. And I'm not an expert on this, but if you do agree to this variance, and they, I don't think any of your rights go away. If you come back and Lamar wants to relocate the signs, you don't lose your rights, you can still come back and get these signs, and still have the rights to do this. So I'm open for questions. I think this is good for, I think this is a win-win situation, I know there's history here, so, and I can't do anything about that, but your consideration is greatly appreciated, and I can answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. The property that you would control, which is the two, with the two billboards and plus the one for the BJ's. The sign company, I'm assuming you've worked with them, and I'm assuming they would agree, and I don't want to know who's going to pay for moving the signs, but I'm assuming as long as they can stay on their parcels that they have these agreements on, that they're willing to do so. They don't want to move them, they don't want to take them away, but they're willing to move them or allow you to move them, whoever's going to do that. Do they have an agreement in perpetuity for both signs?
Yes, it's on title, anyone can pull it up, it's forever.
And so they can move those signs and still remain, either by new agreement or agreement to still have an easement in perpetuity for the signs?
Mayor, I can show you, I have it on the back of here, there's... We had the engineers chart their easement area, and also their sign within that, so they can move them within this easement area, which is pretty restrictive around, it's a rectangle around it, but they can't go outside that. So we would move the easement to where they could move their sign, and they're both right in the general area.
But they have those recorded easements on both signs, not just the one on the corner?
It's both signs.
Okay. I don't have any other questions at this time. Any questions of Tom, council members?
Yeah, just, I don't even know if this is realistic. Mr. Robinson, you've made a personal commitment, and obviously BJ's is certainly a factor. I mean, we've seen after the decision we made two years ago to help Macy's develop that mall, we've, everybody has seen the consequences over the last two years, Macy's, Dick's, Penny's made a major improvement. So I think we know that retail, high-quality retail feeds and attracts high-quality retail, so I'm assuming that this is a move BJ's would want to make, but even if they decide not to, that doesn't close the door for high-quality retail on that site. I mean, is that a fair assumption?
It's a fair assumption. I think I could get another tenant there. It would be, it may be a shop building, but it would be quality tenants in there, maybe a different, a regional restaurant, but I wouldn't put a bad tenant there, no.
What I'm concerned about is moving these signs, accommodating your request and granting the variance, and then having the deals just not develop.
Okay, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm willing to say right now, if BJ's doesn't go, then this agreement is off, and it's null and void, and if I wanted to do something different on that agreement, I would have to come back and start all over again if it wasn't BJ's.
Okay, so, so literally, this is, once this, if we grant this variance and that decision is made, you go back to them and say, "This issue is now resolved, it's set aside, we can proceed," and if they say, "Great, good, everything goes," if they say, "Nah, we're not sure we want to make that move."
If they say they're not going to make the move, then...
We're back to ground zero.
We're at zero, we're back down to where...
I would assume you'd be back if you encountered the same problem, but we still have a long-term problem with Amargosa Road. Does anyone here think that's not going to develop and widen?
I'm positive it will, but I don't know how many years away, it just takes money.
But wouldn't you love to have Mr. Robinson pay for it, instead of having the city pay for it?
No, you didn't, it doesn't say that. Anyone who develops a piece of property has to dedicate and approve, anywhere in the city. And if it's a waiting game, you know, we know all kinds of people who've done that.
Well, then can that be a condition of our agreement, that moving, making these moves are contingent upon you closing a high-quality retail, doesn't it? You want to say BJ's, we'll say BJ's.
I'd even be more specific with BJ's, because that's what I predicated this whole thing on, and I wouldn't be comfortable if it was something else.
Mr. Mayor, to the city attorney, can we, in essence, as a part of any motion, if we were to move in that direction, can be...
Yes, I think your motion should...
...indicate upon that?
Your motion should indicate that your approval is contingent upon events happening in the future, which would be the, I guess, the CFO, or at least building plans for, we'd have to figure out what the language was in terms of what the commitment of BJ's was, but that if that did not occur within a certain timeframe, that the agreement would be void.
Okay, and just to be clear, Tom, could you reiterate that you're requesting this and not Lamar, because you've mentioned Lamar several times... Because you've mentioned Lamar several times, and it kind of, it becomes problematic for me to vote on it if it is Lamar requesting.
No, this is, this is between myself and my company and the city. Lamar is a third-distance party to it, but it's myself and the city.
Thank you.
I have one other concern, and that is that if we, if BJ's comes...
Is this a question to Mr. Robinson?
I'm sorry?
Is this a question?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
If BJ's comes, what happens if the Victor Valley College governing board decides they want to go to PJ Chang's?
I'm not sure of that.
Are they on your list by any chance?
Thank you for speaking, though.
Are there any further questions?
One thing I would like to add, if we do put a contingent on BJ's, it would be upon them pulling their building permit, then I can do the other road improvements while they're building there. Because that takes some time.
I think that would be appropriate, absolutely.
Okay.
I think that, I think that there'll be a lot of discussions and comments with the council regarding which way we go, but I'm sure if there's an approval, there'll be a lot of contingencies. It'll be up to the attorney to work those out. It might even be necessary to take some time to meet with you separately. I appreciate you representing the billboard companies. This is a, this is tough on the billboard companies. If you go back and take a look at what the city council in the past did, trying to remove billboards when properties were developed, or at least to get them into where they're not close together, one of the requirements is that they be at least a thousand foot apart, a thousand feet. And these two are closer than that.
Correct.
And so it's just a piece of property that's unique in that it has two billboards, not one. If it had one, I think it would be easier to deal with. But anyway, we will do our best to cover those items. Is there any further questions or any further comments? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. We may have questions, but I am going to close the public hearing. City council, now is the time for questions of staff or further comments by the staff. I want to clarify an issue. I know that we have talked about Eucalyptus, not Eucalyptus, Sycamore going through. There is a wash, there is property, the cemetery has purchased the property, it doesn't even connect to the parcel. I know that the property owner that had the subdivision at one point in time desperately wanted the street to go through. The other end of the street, for the subdivision, more than half the street's already been dedicated to the city of Victorville. Yahoo, you get to pay for it all. Secondly, there's a major wash that comes off the freeway, and the engineering has not been done, nor is there an agreement of who should pay for that between Caltrans and the city. And so if you take a look at the master plan of streets, that street stops before it crosses the wash. So it does not touch the cemetery, it does not touch the subdivision in the back, but it does provide ingress to another parcel that could be a parcel, but if it's not a legal parcel, and the hotel. The difficulty, the property owner, under normal circumstances, could simply put a driveway in and accomplish the same thing, with one exception. Those driveways on major streets or other streets that intersect come in at 90 degrees, and when you make the 90-degree turn, you have to move it on their property, which makes a large portion unusable, or the billboard's in the way, again, once again, for that street. So one billboard would have to be moved for Sycamore and the Frontage Road, the other billboards for the Frontage Road. So comments from the council, if there's any clarification, comments, questions to the staff? And I have some comments to make when the council is finished. I had, I looked at the billboard ordinance that the city adopted after a lot of input and public hearings. And on the surface, it appears strict. But it's something that other cities have dealt with. And I understand the billboard companies pushing back because this is a business. It's a big business, and it's an important business. If you look at the current ordinance, you can't have two billboards that are within a thousand feet of each other. And if you're going to remove the billboards, they remove three and they get one, or remove four and get one, staff? I never did get that correct.
They remove three and get one, essentially.
Move three and get one.
So two go away, one you can move.
So in this case, you have a, you say to the ordinance, we're not going to do any of those things because this is unique in that the billboards are there and they currently exist, and they do. And they, normally, the property is rented or leased, but in this case, it's in perpetuity. I understand that. I could, I could recognize that this was a unique piece of property with the two billboards. It needs to be widened, the street needs to be widened for the hospital. I don't know when, but we know it's going to be. I really wish somewhere along the line, staff could have negotiated this a little better. I can understand the uniqueness of the property and the need for Sycamore to go in there, even though it's not really going to go anyplace. And the widening of the streets, and because they have the one billboard, to leave the billboard, what I wanted to see, what I had hoped would occur. If Lamar was adamant about not losing a billboard, that somehow staff could arrange where one billboard is moved and left on the property, which would be a stretch and not what it's called for, but I think you could justify it on the variance, and allow them to relocate the other one. But two billboards and the property developing in addition on the same property and violating four or five portions of the new ordinance is really hard for, it's just, it makes it very difficult for me at least. I understand that with an easement in perpetuity, the billboard company doesn't have to do anything. On the other hand, neither does the city. The property is developed, it has two billboards on it. You know, so we're, in the sign world, it's unique to have two with, according to the city attorney, at one point in time, the goal of the city was to reduce, and it's in the ordinance, the number of billboards. While it's a big business and extremely important, it quite frankly was considered blight by the Highway Beautification Act. And because of the lobbying and the fact and the amount of money, you know, they have changed the rules. We have to live with those. I'd love to see businesses with signs that advertise their business. I hate it when I have billboards that advertise Las Vegas, because there's probably over a million sites between here and Las Vegas that could do that. I don't know why they have to be on an existing business in the heart of the city. That doesn't make any sense to me. But I'm one vote, I'm not four. So council, open for discussion?
From my perspective, I think that the long-term liability to the city is more concerning to me than development of the site. Of course, I'd like to see BJ's. And I appreciate Christopher being here on behalf of VVC tonight to testify the fact that, you know, we have people in our own community that would like to be going to BJ's, but we don't have a BJ's up here. I'd like to be going to PF Chang's, but we don't have PF Chang's up here, so, Tom, go get that. But at the end of the day, you know, I think we've talked in numbers of hundreds of thousands or, you know, millions of dollars, and quite frankly, it could be in the tens of millions of dollars that this city could be paying to either condemn or ultimately relocate those billboards anyway at some point in the future. And understanding that they exist within what is current right-of-way that we will need either to expand Amargosa or to build out Sycamore is something that is unique and that ultimately, the city will have to do regardless if we were not to approve this here tonight. So I think the long-term liability to this city is more important to look at by this council than the issues that we see and exist here today. Like Tom said, he's going to be here long-term, he's going to develop the property regardless of what we do here tonight. It's just my fear that, you know, this council, brand-new, has been seeded with so many issues and responsibilities that have been a result of decisions that have been made by past councils that are costing this city a lot of money. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in certain instances, tens of millions of dollars in other instances. And I just don't think that we as a council ought to be making those type of decisions that see a future council with such a responsibility. We need to remember what's happened in the past and not let it happen again in the future.
Mr. Garcia?
Well, do we have to make a decision tonight?
Well, it's a good question, because I have a question.
Many things have come up, you know, that we were not considering.
Okay, we will refer that to the attorney in regard to what our obligations are in a decision. And before I ask my final question, Mr. Kennedy or...
Well, yeah, I have a comment. I share some of the mayor's concerns about billboards. I mean, I'm not sure any of us like them. What I believe is that the road to financial health for the city of Victorville in this region is retail. Also, I think I have known most of the council members that have served for the last 20 years, known them personally. I don't think any of them intentionally made what they thought was a bad decision. I think we have the wonderful blessing of hindsight, so we can look back and evaluate those decisions. Our problem is making decisions today that we think are going to still look good 20 years from now, and I don't have a magic bullet for that one. I like this development. I see that development of Amargosa coming. I think we're going to have to deal with this issue. We're either going to deal with it now, we're going to deal with it later. We're either going to not pay, or we're going to pay, depending on how it all evolves and develops. I kind of like the idea of getting this particular roadblock to that development out of the way today at a very minimal cost, with the side benefit of attracting what I think will be a very good development. So to me, the positives outweigh the negatives, I guess, of, you know, not being able to remove billboards. I think that's my thought on where we are now.
Councilmember Vias?
Well, I'm prepared to vote on it tonight. I don't have a desire to delay it.
Well, it's a difficult decision because I don't like violating our own ordinance, especially when, we did a lot of work on this, spent a lot of legal fees on this ordinance for the Nissweli interchange. And my concern was setting precedence or showing favoritism to a developer. That was my concern. But I think after hearing the developer tonight and hearing that the city is at risk of paying, you know, what could be millions of dollars down the road, you know, I, and I share in councilmember McCackren's concerns about previous councils' decisions have cost the city. But, you know, I don't necessarily know if that would be, you know, the same as this decision, because I think that previous councils deviated from ordinances, you know, and maybe bowed down to the developers, which caused the city to have a lot of bad development in neighborhoods. And that concerns me. But, you know, we're not talking about, you know, putting up, you know, paper houses or, you know, you know, very close proximity homes. We're talking about billboards. I mean, I personally would like for the developer to somehow work out a deal and make Lamar go away and get rid of the billboards, because like Mr. Cox says, you know, why do we have to hear about Vegas 200 miles before Vegas? And I don't like, you know, having to hear about all of our adult shops in Victorville or Hesperia on the freeway. I mean, I just think it's so unattractive. There's no chance of maybe BJ's working out a deal with Lamar and making him go away, period? No?
Is there, I have no idea. Let me explain something. One of the disadvantages at times, which is an advantage to the public, is the council members can't go down back in the hallway and talk about these things, and so we have to bear our souls and our thoughts out here where everyone else sees how we do business. I have no idea how this vote will go. I understand that almost everyone that I've talked to want BJ's. I understand that this is good for the city. I understand we're going to have to widen and improve the road. But I also understand that the city council and staff and other cities have tried to eliminate the billboards where you have an enforced sign ordinance and development with businesses. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have a business on the property and two billboards on the property. Because of the uniqueness that occurred here, and the fact that they have a, have a, the sign company has this easement in perpetuity, obviously, they don't want to let that go. I was so hoping that maybe they could work out an agreement for one sign and maybe relocate the other sign, not take the sign away, not condemn it. But we really haven't had any opportunity for us to talk, for the city to talk to Lamar. And I know that you have, and I'm going to make a guess that if Lamar's offered any option, it's, they're not going to be willing to discuss anything. I don't know that. So before we take a vote, is there any thought on your part that you'd like to go back to see if Lamar would be, would be willing to bend? For the, come up to the microphone, please. And accept one sign and a little of the two? If the council were agreeable to allow the other sign to be relocated some other place in the city?
I propose numerous things to Lamar, outside even me going to a different area and finding a sign, which I didn't realize how expensive they were, the trading, to doing everything. I think it's the problem here is that they've got it in perpetuity. So I've thrown out so many different ideas, I've proposed ideas. Well, you want a digital one, why don't you include these in your, in the three-for-one? And they were working out, it was just non-starters, so...
Well, I'm not proposing the three-for-one or removing other billboards to make up for them. I was proposing is that we was trying to extend a hand as best as we can to ensure that the business can locate, the restaurant can locate, that the property can be developed next door, and that we recognize that they have a prior right, and rather than having to give up the billboards or the three-for-one, that one could remain to be relocated on the property, and then the other one could be relocated someplace else in the city. They win, we win, we at least abide by some portions of the ordinance that the past city council and staff took a long time to get in place. I just wondered if it's possible.
I was pretty persistent with Lamar, and they were pretty persistent with their answer. And I think going back on this, with the road improvements being done, but I mean, I don't think you, we still have that opportunity to go back and they trade signs. They just, it was just flat-out no. In the beginning, they wouldn't even talk to me.
All right, I understand. Okay, council, if there's no further questions or no comments from the staff?
If I might, there were a couple of questions asked. I think councilmember Garcia asked if there's a need to take action tonight. Legally, from the city's perspective, there's not, but I would assume it's a business decision, and I'm sure it impacts the businesses, and time is money for developers. So I defer that question to them. And I think councilmember Vias mentioned that we're violating the code. We're not actually violating the code because you do have a provision in there for variances. What it is, it's inconsistent with the policies and the hopes that you had previously adopted.
Well, like I was saying, I don't think this is a negative. I mean, like, we're violating it to build bad neighborhoods. We're deviating from the policy.
That's correct, yes.
So that we could have a great restaurant.
Right, and your code allows you to do that.
Uh-huh. So I think that's what's helping me through this.
Okay, before we take a motion, Mr. Attorney, what exactly is the request before the council?
I would think you've got two proposed resolutions before you. I think your motion should include, first off, the offer from the developer that they are willing to make the implementation of the agreement contingent on the issuance of building permits for a BJ's development. I think also, I heard from the developer indicate the willingness to agree to dedicate the necessary right-of-ways. I'm not sure if he's willing to put that as a contingency in this motion. And thirdly, I would like the motion to include that your findings in the...
And thirdly, I would like the motion to include that your findings and determinations as set forth in those resolutions include and are based upon the testimony that you heard from night... Tonight, the facts and circumstances that was presented by the various speakers. I think that also enhances the record and supports your decisions, assuming you want to decide that way.
Get all that, Carol Lee.
Yes, I did.
All right. The choice of motion either way.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McCackren, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Cox voting no.
Look forward to your development, gentlemen. Next item is a consent calendar. Item C1 through C12.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
D1, written communications requesting council approval of service provider agreement with Bank of America Merrill Lynch for comprehensive banking services in the amount of approximately
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
D2, request Victorville Water District Board of Directors to approve, A, the reduction of arsenic removal facility surcharge and B, deferment of scheduled water rate adjustment. Is the question I have before you take an action, we are deferring the water rate adjustment, but the question that I had earlier, if in fact there is a... If there is a arsenic removal facility surcharge coming off, does that result in a reduction in the cost on the water bill for the people in... It's to Baldi Mesa, it's not the rest of the city. Just Baldi Mesa, and the answer is yes. Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McCackren, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
D3, an extremely short PowerPoint presentation, but...
I don't know that Sean knows how to do a short PowerPoint presentation.
One thing Sean is excellent at, it is being short.
Being short.
Oh, man.
Oh, that's terrible. Director McLeod, request guide for establishing guidelines or policies relating to, A, request for a city to install sidewalks and B, use of local transportation funds.
Good evening, members of the council. There's been confusion, let's say, within the city staff on the policies regarding the installation of sidewalk when that... It becomes a request from a neighborhood or somebody brings to our attention, you know, a missing link or a need. And there are two ways of doing it. The city has LTF funds which may be used for installation of sidewalk and there is, let's say, a longstanding unwritten policy that we direct those requests either to an assessment district or pursue grants. So, I'm going to go through five topics here.
Any way we can get this on our screens?
Oh, I thought you did.
But we can... Carmen is in the back and she's working on that right now, I'll bet you. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
So, the five items would be just to take a look at the code requirements and also what's known as suspension agreements, to review the current policy, which, as I say, is not written, give you some examples of where sidewalk is missing but there's existing curb and gutter, have the overview of the local transportation funds that the city receives and what they may be used for, and then hopefully getting direction from city council to put together some policies and guidelines so that we've got a uniform policy as it pertains to the use of the LTF funds and how we would respond to a request from a neighborhood to put in sidewalk. Shall I continue or I'm not... So, there are various code sections pertinent to the development of property that require the installation of sidewalk. The primary one would be the development code that when a tract development goes in, there are certain development standards which include sidewalk. So, residential housing and new developments, new subdivisions, they're required to put the sidewalk in. There's another section of the code that requires the installation of sidewalk, dedication of right of way, when there are improvements that exceed $20,000 in aggregate in a one-year period. And that might be an example of, you know, an expansion to an existing home or an expansion to an existing commercial development if it exceeds $20,000 and there is a need for the curb and gutter sidewalk to be installed. That's another requirement of that development. However, there's also a provision for a deferment or a suspension in... By way of a lien agreement for the installation of the curb and gutter. When the request first comes in, essentially, the city will suggest an assessment district as being the most fair and equitable way of... The city would put the sidewalk in, but the cost of that would be assessed back to the property owners. And there are examples of when that has been done in the past and I'll touch on a few of those. But it also has to make sense, you know, it needs to be... It can't just be a remote piece of sidewalk. It needs to make sense that it connects something with something. And along the way, there may be, in fact, these suspension agreements where it would also make sense that the city go to the property owner and say, you have a commitment to pay your share of the installation of the sidewalk on your property. And so, it might be a combination of an assessment district, let's say, with suspension agreements.
Sean, can you explain why we have missing links in developed areas? Why weren't they put in when the development was done?
Probably, if we think of the residential, probably two major areas would be some early subdivisions in the city of Victorville were developed under rural standards. The rural standards did not have a development requirement to put in curb and gutter sidewalk.
But would that explain why you have sidewalks on one side of the street and none on the other side?
Yes, primarily. Or there could be areas that developed partially in the county and the county didn't have that development standard either. Those areas were then annexed into the city and so the city has, you know, quite a... Some fairly large areas of, again, county areas that were subdivided back in the 50s and 60s. The city inherits them and they haven't fully built out. There's no curb and gutter, there's no sidewalk, and it's just a different development standard that was applied at the time.
Well, I've just been over in this... As La Mesa goes all the way out to Elavado and kind of wandering through some of those areas, I wanted to see what that... How that worked. And it looked like the houses were the same and I've just noticed that there were some... I mean, they almost looked like they were developed at the same time. Maybe my eyes are deceiving me, I don't know.
If you take La Mesa Road as an example, on the north side, that's one of the examples that we have there, there is curb and gutter in there, but there is no sidewalk. The other example in that photograph?
Still in the county?
Part of it is, part of it is not. I forget. I think El Rio... No, I'm guessing there's a break between county on the north side and city and then it comes back again.
And that section on La Mesa, east of Elavado, that'd be coming back towards the freeway.
Yes.
You've got sidewalks on the other side, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, they were developed at just different times.
That's right, yes. Or it was annexed.
They're different standards.
It was... Yes, the development occurred in a different jurisdiction. This is another good example of where the development occurred in the county. The square mile that exists between Bear Valley and the Squali Road and it's bounded east-west by Seventh Avenue and Balsam Road. So, on Seventh Avenue, south of Nisqually, again, there is development, residential development, but it doesn't have the curb and gutter in place. And likewise, there are areas along Balsam where the curb and gutter got put in, but again, no sidewalk.
That would also mean that those residents didn't pay for sidewalks in those developments.
That's correct. And that's part of the dilemma. The two sides of the coin are this. To be fair and equitable, the person that paid for the home that developed under the existing subdivision standards paid for the sidewalk in front of their home. The person that bought that rural subdivided house or the county development standard house did not pay for the curb and gutter or the sidewalk. For the city to go in and put sidewalk in in front of those then would appear to have inequity in that they didn't pay for it and the city is doing it.
Sean, can I ask a question regarding that because... And I get that, I understand that, I actually remember all too well what the previous council had to go through on Nisqually and putting in sidewalks and paying for half and having the assessment district establish...
You've stolen my thunder.
Yeah. Is that coming up?
Yeah.
The question though, and maybe not so much for you, but our city attorney is, is when it comes to public safety and not having sidewalks, what kind of liability do we have when we've taken on or annexed in areas of development where there was no requirement to put in sidewalks? And, you know, today on La Mesa, you're getting ready to put in streetlights and at certain intersections that have no sidewalks. Do we have liability with respect to that if we don't do anything?
What creates liability is when you are on notice of a dangerous condition. And so, if you are being put on notice that there are dangerous conditions out there, then you're going to create some liability. Just the mere fact that you don't have them because it's not required would not in and of itself create liability. But if, for example, accidents occur in those areas and you are then on notice of it, that's going to create some potential liability for you.
Yeah, because I know you have numerous examples, but La Mesa's, to me, is a prime example of something that if we don't do anything about it, we've got... We do have liability because you're getting ready to put in streetlights, you have sidewalks on one side of the road, no sidewalks on the other side of the road. Something's going to happen.
I mean, if you take a look at the state highway, Palmdale Road, there are signalized intersections. They're... I mean, they're all over the state where you have exactly that situation. My understanding is that there is no absolute requirement for a city to install sidewalk. That could be a development standard, but it is under no obligation to make sure that every path of travel is a sidewalk paved, you know, asphalt or concrete.
Sean, let me interrupt for a moment. I don't want the discussion to get too mired in the risks involved and the fact that we have neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. This is actually more of a good news presentation. We have needs and we have funds available that are not general fund dollars that can only be spent on certain things. So, let's focus on the fact that we have an opportunity here to put in some sidewalks that we can't use that money for really much of anything else. I don't want to get jumped to the end of the presentation, but I didn't want to get too sidetracked on the negative.
We were told to keep it short.
We have some developments that occurred in the city where the city council in the past did not require sidewalks. And some people in those... In that area have put in sidewalks and some people were required to put in sidewalks, I'd guess, because of improvements they made on the property because if you drive through that subdivision, there are sidewalks in different areas. Mostly, they're not. You go down La Mesa on the north side in the county area, there's no sidewalks. The same is Nisqually on the south side, the county area, and there's no sidewalks. This might... I don't know. You know, we do have paved roads and signals. It may be a great opportunity for someone to visit our county supervisor for... See if he wants to put sidewalks in those areas where we're putting in street improvements also, so they're at least established on each side of the street. But we also just have gaps all over the city where sidewalks don't exist and they ought to exist because you'll be going down sidewalks and then there's a dirt strip for a house or two and then sidewalks again. I don't know what the requirements that the city council wants to put on that, but there is... There used to be, I think, Chapter 27 of Streets and Highways Code, that provided that if those sidewalks exist for more than 60% of the block, you can actually go in and lien the property and put the sidewalks in and lien the property owner for the sidewalks. So, it isn't always the public responsibility to put the sidewalks in, in those gaps, if owners have paid for it. It might appear to be inequitable for the taxpayers to pay for their sidewalks and also pay for the sidewalks for the people who didn't pay for the sidewalks. But a lot of issues here and I'm not sure we could come up with a policy that would address them all. But at first blush, I appreciate the presentation, but knowing the many, many, many areas where there are gaps, it would just seem that those would... Unless a dangerous condition existed or some other circumstances I'm not aware of, it seemed that would be the first policy, to put the sidewalks in so you'd have continuity where sidewalks are except for the gaps and they exist both in the commercial areas and they exist in the residential areas.
And that's the purpose of the item really, Jim, is to give the council all of the information regarding sidewalks and other potential uses for LTF funds and then have a meaningful discussion about what would you like us to put in place as far as either a policy or a practice with those funds? So, go, Sean.
Thanks. Just to give you some examples of where the city has installed sidewalks, what funds that were used and what city participation. And just, you know, unfortunately, you're still not getting it, so maybe I should read it. But I know of at least three TDA Article III grants that were used to install sidewalk in the old town areas. Fifth Avenue, another example where it qualified for a grant, TDA Article III. Sycamore, that's an interesting one because that took three attempts to get a grant, but prior to that, there was the suggestion that the folks in the area form an assessment district, but it... They failed to get sufficient signatures on the petition to agree to pay for the sidewalk. That caused the city to go to seeking the grant and I think there was three applications and it was finally approved on the third application. Nisqually Road, as Councilman McCackren pointed to earlier, that was an assessment district for all of the lots along Nisqually Road between Hesperia Road and Balsam where the city spent some $17 million in completely reconstructing and widening that road. But the council at that time did agree to participate in the sidewalk using 50% of the cost of the sidewalk coming from Measure I. On the other hand, Green Tree Boulevard, that was a project and I remember at least one, maybe two applications to get a grant to put that sidewalk in. That failed and the sidewalk was installed by Public Works staff and that was 100% funded from LTF funds, local transportation funds. And additionally, a project that's either still... It's just completed or it's almost complete on Seneca Road on the south side, east of La Paz. The Public Works Department staff put in sidewalk there with a CDBG grant. So, there's a mixture of how we can go about doing this, both with and without city participation, grants and assessment district. LTF funds, understand there are certain restrictions to that. It is quarter cent sales tax that comes two-sandbag and then is distributed to the various transit agencies. It goes to VVTA and they use whatever they need to meet the needs of the functioning of the transit system. The surplus is then distributed amongst the member JPA cities. For the city of Victorville, that means about $1.3 million expected this year. It does vary because VVTA has more and more demands for their transit system and that is the primary use of that funds. The secondary then would be the surplus for the city. It may not be used for road repair, just to understand that. We can't use it... We can't use it to fix potholes, or crack seal, or overlay. We must use it for pedestrian, bicycle facilities, transit, the like of that, programming, planning.
You have to hold the sidewalk in place with a curb and gutter, is that considered part of the sidewalk?
That can be accomplished. Minor pavement widening, as long as you're not adding a lane of traffic. Curb and gutter, and the sidewalk, then, that would be along with that. You can either regard it as you're doing the widening for a bike lane, and with the curb and gutter, and then the curb and gutter, yes, is needed for the sidewalk.
Sidewalks have to be tied to the curb and gutter somehow? Anchored?
Well, they can move and slide and create a dangerous condition.
The city standard has the sidewalk immediately behind the curb and gutter. There are some specific plan areas where the sidewalk meanders, and there's some landscaping between the, this actual concrete sidewalk and the back of the curb. And the city's current balance in LTF is about $4.5 million, just so that you're aware that there is, there are monies available.
$4.5 million, and what did you say is going to carry this year?
Fund balance of the local transportation fund, the LTF.
That $4.5 million is to be spent on sidewalks?
That's what, that-
Only sidewalks?
No, the topic of this is sidewalks, which LTF may be used for, but LTF may be used for, like I said, the bicycle lane, you know, the curb and gutter for the sidewalk.
Potholes, right?
Cannot be used for maintenance or repair, yeah.
So, the $4.5 million is for bicycle lanes and sidewalks?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that, those funds are to be used for sidewalks. Are they designated for just certain areas, or who determines where they can be used?
That's part of the reason why we're before the city council, is that right now, staff is making those determinations. But what we think needs to be done is a consolidation of the various reactions to a request for sidewalk. If it came to engineering, some years ago, engineering would have said, an assessment district, if that fails, then we would say, well, we'll try and go for a grant. On the other side of the House, Public Works had funds that they could put sidewalk in. And so the criteria was there, it's a similar criteria, but the city would go ahead and use those funds to install that sidewalk.
Yeah, because there's some older parts of the city, you know, that don't have sidewalks. And it doesn't make sense when, you know, for instance, the north side of La Paz will have sidewalks, south side doesn't.
And the idea behind this agenda item was to give you the information, and then have that spur of discussion on something, staff could come back with some kind of a policy, or maybe just an internal practice, depending on what comes out of this, that would give us some direction as to how you'd like us to spend these funds. They're not doing the public any good sitting in the account. They can only be spent effectively, only be spent on bike lanes, and sidewalks, and other alternative forms of transportation. So, we'd like to hear from you. How would, what sort of criteria would you like us to look at when assessing a request for a certain sidewalk? You know, our thoughts would be, it would likely need to be of regional significance, not simply because the homeowner that is right there, present, wants the sidewalk, but more that there's a more regional, maybe it's leading to a school, maybe it's leading to other areas, maybe it's a collector road, things like that. So, we're really just kind of seeking input, not even seeking a particular vote tonight, one way or the other, but really just to have a discussion about, what would you like us to spend this money on, and how?
I would like you to spend the money on sidewalks, and prioritize where the schools are at, so that the kids have a safe place to walk, and let the county do their own. If it's the county area, get our district supervisor to give us some funds, so that we can, we can do that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I was just going to say, I would agree with that, but I think that, based upon some of your success in the past, in applying for grants, I would never discourage you from continuing to do that. I think where appropriate, especially when it's a regional type situation, that if we're willing to match 50%, if we can get a grant for the other 50%, we ought to pursue that. So, I think, you know, if you ultimately can't get that grant, and that sidewalk needs to go in, then the direction from the council should be, put the sidewalk in, using the LTF funds. But I would always encourage staff to pursue the grant, where there would be some sort of matching requirement on our end, to get that grant money, so that we're not paying 100% of the cost of that.
I was kind of interested in the mayor's idea. There, I don't know if this was exactly your idea. Does the county bear any responsibility, or any, do they have any inclination to provide grant funds, to provide sidewalks in those areas that were at one-time county developments?
I think it's worth pursuing. In the case of La Mesa, that if it's a fairly narrow street, you know, pedestrians can cross the street if one side has sidewalks for extended period, that's a very wide street, and leads in and out of subdivisions. And with the improvements that have been made, with the signalization going in, it would seem like at least we'd make the inquiry, to see if the county would participate or not.
Yes, and the other possibility would be a joint application, which scores very highly usually, when you've got split jurisdiction like that. To have the two jurisdictions come together and apply for a grant is usually well received.
I have one question, I didn't, may have misunderstood. Did you say that there was an assessment district for sidewalks on the south side of Nusqually?
Both sides.
Both sides?
Both sides. There's no county area-
But there's sidewalks that are in.
All of that area is annexed into the city of Victorville, so there is a, an assessment district over that two-and-a-quarter mile stretch, basically.
Four sidewalks.
Four sidewalks, yes.
Well, the city could go ahead and put in the sidewalks where they're missing, and use the assessment district currently?
I'm not aware of any missing sidewalk on Nusqually Road.
There's the corner of Seventh and, and Nusqually, is that what you're referring to, the commercial corner there?
Well-
On the north side?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty good. It's a, there's several areas there that don't have sidewalks. But I'll, well, I think I would, I think I will do what all the councilmen will do. Number one, is we'd like to see some policies or some suggestions, but as Mr. Kennedy, Councilmember Kennedy indicated, he was driving in an area, and noted some improvements were needed. I think we all have those ideas. I'd like to be able to just simply forward those to Doug, and then you can get together with the city manager, and, because obviously with the Brown Act, city council cannot get together and decide where these should go, but with the policy, staff can decide, but we can also provide input where we see gaps, that obviously should be corrected. I think we can do both, and I think that would go a long way. And if anyone has an idea on the policies, as Councilmember Vias suggested, look at the schools. Look at where we have high-foot traffic, or, and we will do the same thing, but staff can do the same thing, and may even better, because you have a lot of workers in the field, and I know you have feedback from those. You have high pedestrian areas because of business establishments, schools, churches, parks, et cetera. It seems to me that the policy has to incorporate the need for sidewalks, leaving to and from those facilities.
Yeah, and in fact, you know, those are the very similar guidelines to what we need to meet to score well in applying for the grants. So, you know, we totally agree with that level of criteria. The other thought we had was to have city council consider any requests for sidewalk installation that would exceed a certain amount of money, and just for the sake of discussion, the $25,000, if it's going to cost more than that, then we would take it to the council, and see if the council desires to use LTF funds, or suggest that we go to the people of the benefiting neighborhood, whether they want to form an assessment district, or actually pursue a grant if it merits that. But in the case of, you know, an immediate need, that is in excess of $25,000, then the city council could authorize staff to move forward with that. Anything less than $25,000, meeting the kind of criteria that we'd like to see from city council, that would allow staff to move forward and get that work done, as opposed to having to come to city council with every single request.
I have one question. In areas where sidewalks were put in, and they're now broken up because of tree roots spouting, freezing water, et cetera.
Yes.
Can this be used to replace those areas?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you just, I just found a way to spend all your money.
Unfortunately, unfortunately-
Yeah, there's a lot of those areas.
You still don't have the display on your monitors?
No.
That's a pity.
No, we-
Councilmember Garcia.
A couple are watching the ballgame here, but-
All right.
I think the information is useful. I think, my personal preference, you've thought about this a lot more than we have. We have general awareness. I'd kind of prefer to see staff come back with some recommended proposals and strategies, rather than us try to sit here and tell you what direction you ought to go in.
And we'd be happy to do that. Just wanted to get a little bit of input. There had been a question about the use of LTF, so we thought this was a good time to educate the council on its restrictions, and then seek input for some policy.
You know, I don't want to offend any bike riders, but I honestly believe sidewalks ought to be a higher priority than bike lanes.
I agree. Sean, we had Public Works staff do a lot of the sidewalk work on Green Tree.
Yes.
And we were able to do that because of our charter, is that correct?
Yeah, as far as the size of the project, yeah.
Has that ability, because of the new law that had been passed, gone away?
What the new law requires now is just charter cities have to abide by prevailing wages, and it would apply, I think, also to force account.
We can still do it, we just have to pay prevailing wage.
That is correct.
I think there's a $43,000 limitation.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's impossible to do, under those circumstances, though. I mean, I've heard contractors that did the half-street for the city, and their half-street, and had to keep track of when they were prevailing wage, and contract, and prevailing, and contract, I don't-
I don't know how they did it.
We can't do this with city employees.
But you've got to pay prevailing wage.
Yes, if we use city employees, then we're bound by the new laws that, under the charter city.
Oh, and you have to follow prevailing wage with city employees, huh?
That's right.
So, I mean, based upon that, when it comes to sidewalks, do we save any money by contracting out, or is it just-
It's possible.
Is it possible?
If we're getting into, you know, something that's a half a mile long, missing link, city staff can get in there and do a good job on that size of a job, and that's kind of where that $25,000 criteria that I mentioned earlier, if it becomes a large job, several miles of sidewalk, that's where we would probably go out to bid, and have a contractor go in there and do that.
Then, in that case, I would suggest, as a part of the policy, that that be, that become a part of it, because I, where we can use our own city employees, we ought to, but if it becomes larger, and much bigger than that, and we need to go out to bid, then we should do that as well.
As an example, Green Tree was a mixture of both. City staff did-
Okay.
-the easy parts, I think, and the more difficult ones, then, were contracted out.
But the city staff did an excellent job.
Yes, they did.
They did probably the majority of that sidewalk out on Green Tree. And you know, it was a needed missing link, that there was no development, and nobody fronts on it. The, that's the unique thing about that one, was these lots back onto it, and the residents have no desire to pay an assessment to have sidewalk at the back of their house. So, the-
Well, even though individuals may not want to pay assessment, you may have individuals that want a sidewalk and be willing to contact, I think we should let them know, that if they contact the city, we may be able to work with them and use part of the money. If they want to put up the money and put in sidewalks, where otherwise, we wouldn't have the funding to do so. I know we've done that in the past, where we've kind of matched their effort.
Yep.
At least help them where we can. Is there any questions? This very short presentation has gotten a lot longer than I thought.
I only got halfway through my slide.
You're halfway through?
What I'm going to do is provide council with a hard copy of the slide. It's worth seeing, believe you me.
Well, I know you have additional information, and when we get back to when you present the policy to us, you can finish at that time, how's that?
That sounds like a deal, thanks.
Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, I think the record ought to reflect that Sean McGley did his very best to make this a short presentation.
It was extended because of my questions, and I apologize.
That's, that's-
And next time you make a long presentation, just apologize again.
And in the future, let's refer to it as brief, not short.
Oh.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Brief.
Brief, Mr. McGley, okay. Any questions before we move on? I think I'm on item four, is that correct? Request for additional appropriations in the amount of $7,481.64 for fueling station enterprise funds, and increase award to Atlas Copco for the rebuild overhaul of the backup CNG station compressor to $47,781. Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia, may I get a vote?
She doesn't have a screen.
Yeah, I don't have a screen, but-
What is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Item five, yes, it's, it's, yes. Mojave River Watershed Group Implementation Agreement. Motion, a second?
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Ah, yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item six, Resolution 13-062, Waste Tire Enforcement Grant Application.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven, Considered adoption of a resolution of the city council of the city Victorville amending municipal code section 2.20.040, changing the time of the open session of its regular meetings. I don't think there'll be any objections, I think this has worked out well for everyone.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
We are, that's, that's okay. We are at E1. The public comments, I have a card from, Reed, come up, you have three minutes to address the council, Mr. Reed.
With it to present this case in front of the city of Victorville council. My name is Rafat Reed, I am from Los Angeles County. I have a piece of land with others, and the border of it is Hook, Morse, Sintra South, Amasest, and the Cobalt. The problem in this land is, is a vacant land, is not owned by one person, is divided to more than 12. And one of the tenants, which is across the street, north of Hook, complained about the trash coming in, and is used to clean by the facility, by the city trash people, to, every two or three months, they go there to clean it. Now, there is a code enforcement officer called Andy Venice, raised the point that we have to clean it. And there is no definite lines for any properties of those, there is no surveyor working for the code enforcement, and this violation is not our violation, like he's interpreting one of the VMCC of the city in the vacant land. When I looked at it, it looks like this is for people who are living in houses, and because they said, those people, they have not allowed, not to allow, I'm not allowing anybody to throw any trash on my property, or debris of construction, or anything like that, then, and this is, the case is like, and then he started, Andy Venice, he started to- Then, and this is, the case is like, and then he started, Andy Venice, he started to send us, threatening us, we are going to do a fine for you, we are going to do a lien on your property, and he's recommending a company called Earth, Earth, Earth what? Earth, he's recommending a company to clean our land, and he mentioned one name called Dennis, to call him to find a way to clean our land. And the cost of this kind of cleaning is very expensive, and the value of the land went down in that area, 90% down. We can't develop it now. We have to wait until the, all of the storage, or all of the houses which is available sold, in the way we could start rebuilding it. One of my proposal is.
You have a very short time left. You have 15 seconds. You need to wrap it up.
Then, we have to have infrastructure by the city, and the structure company, the trash company is critical, that is, and we have to have these issues to be presented in the city council through the code enforcement, because the code enforcement would like to have all decisions taken by him like a justice, like a surveyor, and this is not fair.
Okay, your time is up. This item, we can't get entered into a discussion because it's not on the agenda. Had it been agendized, other people may have wanted to show up and discuss the matter. We have heard what you say. I don't know who code enforcement supervisor is. The gentleman back there will see you in the back of the room. He will get the details from you and be more specific in regard to what your request is, if it needs to come before the city council. We will address it, but I'm pretty sure it can be straightened up if you meet the individual who will meet you in the back of the room. We can't get involved in the details, it's not an agendized item, but we thank you for coming up and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
I will take his email, in the way I could send him all of what's required to be in one of the agendas in the future.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have no other cards. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council at this time? Seeing no one. Mr. Huber, did you want to address the city council?
Sidewalks. Old Town has a specific plan for all the sidewalks that are missing in spots. That probably wouldn't cost a fortune to do that, but I think cities should take a look at that and fix some of those cracked spots and vacant areas. It's just short areas, a block here, a block there, a block there, but it would sure be help the Old Town to fill in some of those areas. I'm not on the board anymore, but I have a set of plans of the vacant, and the city would have the plans, so that we got 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else who wants to address the council? Seeing no one. Discussion on possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Councilmember McEckern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't know if you all noticed this when you were driving around the city on whether it be Asbury Road or Bear Valley Road, but it seems to me that jaywalking has become the norm, and I'm tremendously concerned about people getting hit on Bear Valley or Asbury Road. They don't pay attention to the crosswalks. I'm wondering what our captain and the police department can do regarding this. Even just today, this afternoon, I was on my way back to my office on Asbury Road, and people were crossing from what is the Chase Bank over to the medical facility, and there's no crosswalk anywhere near there. I see people crossing from Desert Valley Hospital, where there is a crosswalk, over to Tom's Burgers on the other side. There's just so, people are, I don't know, taking their lives into their own hands, so to speak, and I think we ought to do something about it, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, because we do find a lot of people walk out into traffic as if they have the right of way. In fact, I'd gotten some complaints, and I got a copy of the DMV code. Really unclear. Really unclear. I know they're supposed to be in the crosswalk, but if they're not, you still have to stop, or why if they're not in the crosswalk? I think, Sam, this is an item that a lot of people are interested in, because we have more and more people walking in front of traffic, walking out in the streets, jaywalking.
There have been a couple of deaths in the last two weeks.
And that's it. And it just seems that even with the deaths, people aren't, they don't even care. They just continue to just cross Bear Valley Road. Of all places, Bear Valley and Asbury Road are two of the busiest streets within our city, and we just have people crossing, even when they're close to crosswalks. Where there's streetlights and, you know, signalization, they just continue to cross.
Well, Palmdale Road has the same problem, and they don't have any crosswalks. They're just forever, and then they're getting hit, killed.
Again, I think this is an area where staff can kind of make a determination to see where people are crossing and why, and maybe we need to put crosswalks in certain areas. I don't know how we handle Palmdale Road, since it's a state highway, but, but good comments, because this is becoming a problem.
Mr. Mayor, rather than asking, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just going to say that that's true, and I think that there's so much of it, so many different places. Those were good comments about looking at the crosswalks and maybe putting some in. But also, I think it's almost impossible for the cops to be everywhere, but they need to try. But I think that, I've been hearing on the radio that other cities are advertising on the radio just different things that are going on in their city, and I think maybe we should have a campaign that says that, you know, Victorville has zero tolerance for jaywalkers, and, you know, take care of yourself, your family, because the cops are going to be out there, and they're going to be ticketing you, so that maybe people will be more aware of it.
Good point.
I remember years ago, first time I ever set foot in New York City, walking along the street, and they, everybody has no parking signs, right? In New York City, they have signs that say, "Don't even think about parking here." I mean, they, literally, don't even, maybe if we had a series of signs that said, "Don't even think about crossing the street here," maybe that's the kind of thing that would get somebody's attention. I don't know. Because we can't deploy sheriffs on every busy street to stop jaywalkers.
Yep. But it's a problem, and it's becoming more of a problem, and maybe we can participate with crosswalks, and maybe as Councilmember Vias, public service announcements. Other items, discussion of possibly items come up? I have an item that I, I don't know how to address, but we know that there was an outcry about red light cameras, except the fine is the same as if a policeman gave you the ticket. I guess people feel better if a person handed it to them rather than mailed it to them. But the fine is outrageous, and over the last few months, I have gotten information in regard to what the exact same fine is in other states, similar states, adjoining states. I'm not sure what happened. And I know the rumor was that when California got short on funds, the legislature, because the legislature sets those fines in the vehicle code, not the City of Victorville, or not the county, and kind of said indirectly, I guess, go out, fill the coffers. Those fines are outrageous, and rather than individuals wanting to comply, it causes them to be really angry, stand outside the courthouse when some of those people come out, and who write to some of the judges that just refuse to find that amount because it's outrageous, and they find lesser amounts. There's a penalty that the individuals pay, but $494 for doing a California stop, or what, that's just outrageous. By the way, the two people that was really complaining, the ticket didn't come from our city policeman. But nevertheless, it's there. Somebody's trying to fill the coffers at the state. I would like permission to contact our State Assemblyman and Senator to see if they really want to keep those at that level. It is causing widespread disrespect for law enforcement. Once they get a ticket and have to pay that kind of money, it's outrageous, and I don't think the state legislature can justify it. But as they remind me frequently, they can do whatever they want. But it seems to me it ought to be reasonable, it ought to be reasonable commensurate with the, with the code violation, and it's, it's not, and it's not at all. So, anyway, I was just venting a little bit, but I'm serious that, why not the council take an action? But I don't want to do something extremely foolish. I'd like to have an input from our police chief, who we rely on for law enforcement, on his thoughts on that before we take an action.
Do you want to agendize that?
No, not until we hear from Mr. Lucia. He will have time in the future. Well, he wants the time now.
Mayor, members of the council, just so you know, whether a deputy sees you run a red light and pulls you over and writes you a ticket, or whether a red light camera sees you and you get a ticket in the mail, that fine is the same. It isn't different for red light tickets, et cetera. And you talked about jaywalking a little bit ago. I can, I can probably, I don't have the numbers, but I can, I can guess with some certainty that those who run red lights account for more injuries and deaths in the community than jaywalking does. So, it is an important issue, and yes, the judges routinely knock those fines down, and they have the authority to do that.
Well, they do, and I think it's interesting that they do, because I know several of them, and they're very much aware of what those fines would be if you were in Arizona, in the other states adjoining California. They're keenly aware of what those fees are, they're substantially less, what those fines are, substantially less.
I did something very bad. I had a stick of gum in my mouth, and on my way up here, I swallowed it, and my mother told me never to do that.
[laughing]
Told me not to eat and swallow watermelon seeds either.
Or cross the road without looking both ways.
Or cross the road without looking both ways, or at an intersection.
Well, all of you know, our police chief, we're glad that he's here. We work with him closely, and we welcome his input on any of these items in regard to law enforcement, whether it's jaywalking, California stops, or whatever, so feel free to.
Quick, can I, on jaywalking, if I could? The reason it seems as though the vehicle code is confusing is because although a pedestrian does not have the right of way to step off the curb, the curb unless it's at an intersection or in a crosswalk, you still must surrender yield, otherwise there's going to be an injury. So, that's, that's why there's some.
Yes. And it's, yeah. So, do they have the right of way? Well, yes and no.
They don't, but once they're in the roadway.
They do.
They establish the right of way at that point. And we do have a zero tolerance for that in the city.
Good. Report, thank you, Sam. I'm, is there any other question?
I have, I have one item I'd like to agendize.
Sam, don't learn with scissors on your way back out.
Or, I'd like to.
Councilman Kennedy.
I'd like to ask the council to agendize this issue. It's been in the newspapers for months. It's, there was a major presentation down at VMI a month ago. Art Bishop said in the paper, what was it, yesterday? I've been out of the country for sometime in the last week, said that the thing he was looking forward to as mayor of Apple Valley was the building of the Yucco Loma Bridge. As things stand today, what's going to happen is they're going to build that bridge across the river. It's going to put it out on Yates, they're going to develop Yates, they're going to bring it around to Ridgecrest, and all that traffic is going to flow out Ridgecrest to Bear Valley Road. They're going to accomplish virtually nothing with, with that project. The reason it has always made sense is for it to continue over the railroad tracks to Nisqually. Position of the City of Victorville is and has been for, I guess, recent years, we don't have the money. We don't have any way to build the bridge over the railroad tracks. So, that project is going to stop somewhere at Ridgecrest, and at some point in the future, half the people in this valley are going to be pretty unhappy with Victorville, because we are unable, or perhaps unwilling, to look at options, to consider what we might be able to do to complete that project. And there are arguments that it is of no benefit to Victorville. Believe me, I think that argument has, has two sides. And I know this is not a popular issue with staff and with other members of the council. And what I'm going to suggest is that we agendize this item, and staff come back with realistic, unbiased, unpredetermined conclusions about that bridge. We built a Nisqually interchange by pledging measure I funds in the future. Major project, measure I funds. Those funds can only be, my understanding, I'm not a city manager, I'm not staff, but my understanding was, those funds have to be used for major projects. We got a lot of needs in the City of Victorville, but I'm not aware of any other major projects that we have on the board after the Nisqually interchange is built. I'm questioning why we can't use a similar device of pledging major, measure I funds to do our part to complete that bridge. I know the supervisor is anxious for us to step up and do our part. Our part, frankly, is not very well defined at this moment. That's part of what we have to talk about. And there's been a lot of discussion about this among staff and council members, and, but I think it's time for a public discussion and a serious, serious look at what are our options, and I really would like to have the measure I option explored. And I'd like to agendize that, if I could get some agreement.
Hey, before we find a possible agreement?
Well, you, you've got complete agreement from me, and, and just so you know, this would have come later, but I'll do it now. At our last Mountain Desert Sandbag Measure I meeting, we approved, and ultimately the board approved, for lack of better terms, an allocation agreement. Basically, what Sandbag staff had determined was that the Victor Valley subregion, over the years, when it comes to measure I funding, has been shorted about 3%. What that amounts to is in the millions of dollars, but does it fully pay for this particular project? And the widening of Ranchero and Asperia remains to be seen, but I think any item that is agendized ought to include Sandbag staff so that they can explain that portion of it, because I think that this is their way to finally get this project done, as well as Ranchero, and in essence, complete the entire Victor Valley subregion major projects plan, because we, we do not have any other major projects on the drawing board.
And I think an important issue is for everybody to know how much money Victorville has already put on the table for this project, which, according to the conversation Doug and I've had, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million, that is, that is sitting in the hands, frankly, of Apple Valley, that we've already put on the table. But if it takes more, we need to talk about it.
There's no objections from the members of the council. Staff, you need to coordinate this, put together the figures, obtain what we need to from Sandbag, and then agendize that when it's convenient. There's no objections from other members of the council? Okay.
Happy to do it.
All right. Other items of the council's agenda from council members? Hearing that. Short report from the city manager.
A brief report from the city manager.
Brief, brief. I'm sorry, I used short, I'm sorry. Brief report.
Uh, just a reminder that City Hall and most of our facilities will be closed from December 24th, Christmas Eve, through January 1st. And with that, there are other crews that will be working, public works crews, if there are problems, if there are emergencies, you can certainly call the emergency hotline numbers, and we can get crews out there. And of course, police and fire will be there as always, as we count on them. With that, I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and of course, happy holidays to those who don't celebrate Christmas.
And as I understand it, there will not be a council meeting in the regular, regularly scheduled for the first Tuesday in January?
Yes, that is our intent, is to cancel the January 7th council meeting. You won't have any staff here to put together an agenda. If you'd like to meet, just to hang out, we could still do it, but we would recommend against it.
Well, all those people who are just anxious to come down here and talk to us are going to be disappointed, but I think we can live with it this time.
Yes, it is our intent, however, to hold, it's not exactly a meeting. The city council is going to have a strategic planning session on January 9th, which is a Thursday. It's effectively an all-day session, 9:00 AM until about 3:00 PM. Public comment will be taken at that, but it's really more of a workshop for the council to discuss the future of the city amongst themselves.
Okay. Any other reports from the city manager? Reports from council members? I'll start with Councilmember Garcia.
I have none.
Councilmember McEckern?
I just wanted to really quick mention that I attended the opening of station, Fire Station 22. This is the new Spring Valley Lake Fire Station. Yesterday, a beautiful facility, and although it really serves the Spring Valley Lake area, it also serves the City of Victorville in a big way, along Ridgecrest and, and some of the other parts of the city, as well as the City of Asperia, so it was a great event.
Yep, I understand it's a very, very nice station.
Very.
Councilmember Vias?
None at this time.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Just want to announce that the Cal State San Bernardino Women's Volleyball Team lost in the Western Region Championship Game, five games to, three games to two. lost in the Western Region Championship Game, five games to... Three games to two. It was just a sad, sad night. They lost the final game 15 to 12 or something. Great team. You've all been following it with me, so I...
Sure. Oh, absolutely. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the council, wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and all the things. Prosperous and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for participating. Good night all.